School program assistant, up to three hours a week, twenty dollars an hour.
Not coming from Bartlett.
Not coming from Bartlett, thank you. And then for the summer enrichment program, sixteen days, four hours a days, four hours a day, thirty-five dollars an hour, Madison Gifford, Kathleen Gilmet, and Samia. So, down to summer enrichment and stuff. Now you know why we were in with longer than expected. Did I miss anything? We talked about negotiations with the staff. I left some homework with the board to work on and then, but then our negotiators, Sherry and I are going to reach out to the Madison Employees Association. I think that got me everywhere. Oh, nope. Thank you. You can nudge me, you don't have to just. We accepted the hourly renominations for hourly staff, so there are no changes there. But the hourly staff was renominated for next year, so those contracts will be going out soon. Now did I miss anything? Thank you, sir. We're into public section. Approval of the agenda. Take a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Jeremy, second by Ed. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Posture abstaining, carries. Approval of the minutes of the regular four-one-twenty-four school board meeting. Take a motion to approve. Motion by Jeremy, second by Ed. Any other discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? We're good. Special meeting on the fifteenth of April. Yeah, April.
Oh, yeah, you're right, sorry. I had to think for a second, too.
So, approval of the minutes of the four-fifteen meeting, special board meeting, that was...
Yes.
Right, that was at the joint board meeting.
Yep.
It was very quick. So, motion to approve?
April fifteenth?
Motion by Jeremy, second by Ed.
Right, the fifteenth, he said fourteen.
I'm sorry, the fifteenth. Four-fifteen-twenty-four.
Okay, keep going.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Carries. Acceptance of consent agenda. You have your Madison Elementary School principal letter, your capital reserve fund balance, and your capital reserve plan in the consent agenda. Anything need to be pulled out of that? Seeing nothing, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda by Sarah, second by Jeremy. Any other discussion?
I just got a question.
Yes.
With the HVAC thing?
Yes, yep, principals report. Perfect. All in favor on the consent agenda? Any opposed or abstaining? All right. Next school board meeting is June third at six P.M. That'll be here in the library. S.A.U. thirteen joint board meeting will be June seventeenth at six P.M. And that will be... Where do you want that mic, in the gym or in the...
Yeah.
No.
No.
Gym's not available on the seventeenth.
Okay, thank you for that. So, we'll be in the...
Art room.
Art room. Through the front door, down the hall to the right, all the way down on the right.
Come one, come all.
We'll get Mike with those kind of flags.
But June third is here.
June third is here in the library, yes. Public comment.
They're saying hurry up, we want to prevent.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're next. Principals report. Cliff Grant presentation.
So, we will start off by giving a huge round of applause to those two ladies for writing and submitting the grant application to Cliff. And they're going to explain all of that with a presentation using the TV. If you want to just move around a little bit to, in order to see, yeah. Come on, I didn't just sit in my lap.
It's okay.
What? What?
So, this is Tammy Flanagan and Diana Hayward.
Yes. So, we are here to talk about the Year of the Book, which will be for twenty-two-four, twenty-five. We were very happy to get the news that we had our grant application been approved. We were one of twelve schools within New Hampshire and Vermont to get the Year of the Book grant, which is twenty-five thousand dollars worth of literary monies to be spent over the course of a year, a year-plus. And we're very excited to get, get started to be planning with that. So, let us give you a little background with this video, if that would be acceptable, to tell you a little bit more about Year of the Book.
The Cliff Year of the Book grant is designed to create a culture of literacy and support a love of reading and writing throughout an elementary school community in New Hampshire or Vermont.
Well, the Year of the Book has really been this platform to promote the love of reading.
I love the books that I got, and I've been reading them a lot.
For the first time, and I've been here many years, for the first time, I saw a celebration of books. Without exception, it was happening schoolwide.
We're a small school, we have a very tight budget, there's no way that we would be able to do something like this. This is a godsend, really.
The Year of the Book has been an amazing year for us, for our school. It has been a year from the day we started, filled with literacy events, literacy excitement, not just that, but sort of a vibe through the school of reading and talking about reading. And it's been a year of being fully immersed in literacy.
Each school receives twenty-five thousand dollars' worth of literacy support, including inspiring programs, materials, and high-quality new books over the school year. Sponsored schools typically conduct fifteen to twenty literacy events throughout the year, such as author visits, writing workshops, storytelling programs, family literacy celebrations, parent seminars, book giveaways, and more.
The Year of the Book has meant for us that every student has, has chosen for themselves ten books, which is something that for most of them is just not something they have and not something they've even thought about having.
It's not just the reading, it's the vocabulary, and it's the developing listening skills and imagination and creativity.
I mean, we've had Jim Arnoski, Ted Schai was here for three days, John Stephen Gurney, we had Marty Kelly, then Natalie Kinsey-Mora. She has really changed lives in this community, not just the school.
Good afternoon, everyone! It's good to see you!
When I was in second grade, an artist came to my school, and she was a great inspiration to me. And hopefully, I can do that for, for them.
Made me know more about how he draws books, and it will make me better, for me to draw books.
I thought the presentation was really great and really encouraging. If he were to tell it to everybody in the whole world, everybody would be reading at least five hundred books a year.
In the past, we really haven't had the funding to have authors come and visit through Cliff in the Year of the Book that will have that opportunity. And it is a very powerful way for kids to see it's a process and that writing is not something that is easy or comes quickly to them, and that revising is a very big part of that. So, I think it really hits home a lot of what we're trying to teach as educators.
For a school our size, it has, it has a first-order impact and it, and it takes over our year. So, our, our task is, so how do we keep carrying this forward?
Maintaining this positive momentum is vitally important. So, Cliff provides additional support in the year following the Year of the Book. Cliff is delighted that more than ninety percent of the school served say they are able to maintain positive momentum around reading and writing after Cliff's Year of the Book is complete.
The Year of the Books has really, like, motivated me to read because it makes reading sound a lot more fun. We're very fortunate to have this.
For our kids who often have very little in the way of reading modeling at home, for them to see all of this modeling at school, all of this excitement at school about reading and about literacy, I think is, you know, life-altering for them.
So, yes. So, Cliff Year of the Book, it's grants they provide, just what they, what we're saying, twenty-five thousand dollars' worth of programs support and brand-new books over the course of one school year, with some follow-up in the next year after that, so. Some of the core events, the ones that we have, that, that they require us to do, is a, a big kickoff event in the fall. They'll send a presenter there. There's a library event, which also includes a presenter, and there will be money, you know, well, books presented to both the library here and to the public library, so they're very excited about that. And Sloan was very gracious to write us a support letter when we were putting the application together, so she was very excited to hear that, that that had come to fruition. And then, the book giveaways, where each student will select eight to ten books over the course of the school year. We've seen it at eight, we've seen it at ten, so we didn't, we didn't want to misquote, but, on that. And then, in addition to that, you can select three options to your core events. So, these are just some things that are possible. They, they give you a menu and a list of, of people on their roster that you can choose from. So, residencies for writing, storykeepers is about fam, you know, family stories and how family stories can be, can be captured from, from your, from your relatives and those kinds of things. So, there's lots of different things we'll have to consider there. And, as I said, there is community support built into this. This library, we're going to choose a thousand dollars, and then, the public library will get five hundred dollars in new books. And there is a momentum grant that's built in as well, follow-up funding to maintain momentum in the following year at a thousand dollars, so that's built in as well. So, want to talk about advisory?
Yeah, we, you know, just sort of talked to a bunch of staff and sort of a cross-section of volunteers, special educators, classroom teachers, specialists, to come together and sort of brainstorm how we can map out the year for next year. You know, really wanting to take into consideration all the different grade levels, the preschool, trying to include, you know, as many ideas as we could in those. We're not quite sure exactly what the time commitment will be, but we're going to be meeting via Zoom with their program director in a couple of weeks. We're also meeting with one of the recipients from last year. Aunt Tammy and I are going to Zoom with that person, just to sort of pick their brain, what worked, what didn't work. And, yeah, and so then, we'll, you know, just sort of as a team, come together and, and make the plan for next year. Very exciting.
There are some additional voluntary programs that you can take advantage of. There are mini-grants for, the teachers can apply for, for up to four hundred dollars. And I think, what do we have, two thousand?
Yep, two thousand total.
Is our cap, but within the school, we can have teachers team up and co-write mini-grant or something that they might for their grade level or individually. The Read With Me contracts is something I don't know a lot about yet. We're going to get some more information on that. And even a hundred dollars in incentive prizes for book reviews, which is kind of cool, because I, next year's my time to do book reviews for the kids, so I'm looking forward to be having that, to make that a little bit bigger and more interesting to them, if there's prizes involved. And, so we were talking about communication. We will communicate regularly with the school community in the weekly newsletter about upcoming Cliff events. We'll, we'll have to put our, you know, communications hats on to make sure that we get all the, get the word out in as many ways as we can, so that people will come. Family literacy events, I know, are some really important ways that we can, to make this, you know, to, to make this really impactful for our kids, if they get this at home as well as here, so. So, we still have probably more questions than answers at this point, but we're very excited to delve into it and see what we can come up with. It's, yeah, a lot of really cool things and lots of exciting opportunities, so.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you, a lot of work.
That's awesome.
Look forward to hearing more as, as we go and whatever we can do to support, please let us know as well.
That's really great.
And I won't have to be running to the PTO every few years.
You still can, you still can. You know who to ask.
Just start charging them to use your room. Where they're meeting.
That's a good idea.
Right.
And I start.
Any questions for, any questions?
No, thank you for so much for all your hard work for that, that's great. It's exciting. That's a lot of money.
And I like the way that it ties in with the town.
Right, that's really cool.
Yeah. When we're thinking about reading across America, we think, wow, what more, you know, how big we can build that for next year.
That's great. That's awesome.
Awesome, thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate it, appreciate it. Title One, plan to approve that.
All hard to follow that.
Right, you should have switched.
Twenty-five thousand, no. So, this year, in Title One World, the state has revamped how they want us to create a plan, so they provided a template. Heather and I and Jen Huckman from the S.A.U. went to a grant workshop provided by the DOE, which was fantastic to get all that information. So, we have submitted, Title One, we already had to submit it, it was due in April. Usually, I bring a plan to you in August and say, hey, will you approve this? They, I found out at that conference that it was due in April, so it's already been written and submitted and approved. So, you know, we'll post a copy on our website, but just so you're aware. And the template, I think, really changed because they were trying to make sure it really aligned with the law that goes with Title One funding. So, there was a lot of, like, here's a legal reference, and here's the question that you need to answer. So, it's thorough, but it was, it's thorough. That's done. HVAC update, so June seventeenth is the first day of construction. So, students are done on the Friday, and on Monday, they will be here, and our gym will be completely off limits, so we will be shutting and locking the double doors by the gym bathrooms, and that's it. So, we won't probably unlock those again until, they say, six to eight weeks. It does put us to the week of Old Home Week, if they go that eight weeks. They could get it done sooner, but they also could take later, but that's the hope right now, is that they're done in the six-week timeframe, but there's no guarantee whatsoever. So, when we met with them a couple weeks ago, they're ready, they have the equipment, which is good. They walked around, we had the two co-owners here and walked around with Sean Bergeron and with Ken, and have some good plans, things, they're ready to go. Have all, they can have several contractors here at the same time, but it will mean that come June seventeenth, the gym is completely off limits. Gym, kitchen, all those areas. They'll have cranes here, they'll have equipment, they'll have people, they'll be running propane lines and stuff, so it's just not.
So, you're saying gym, kitchen, that hallway, most of that.
Well, I was going to say, why don't we just shut down the side of the driveway? Just shut down the driveway?
Well, we can't, because we also have several summer program things happening here. And so, we did talk about how much access, there may be a couple of days that we shut down the driveway, depending on what they have. So, like, when they have the crane, absolutely. Like, we're not, so, so working with them as, because I did ask that question if we needed to. We'll probably change some of our patterns and use that front loop a whole lot more. But, yeah, so we have had those conversations and will continue with those as they start the work and based on what their needs.
So, when I heard of the date, I asked Mike to draft the letter.
That's a good idea.
For us to send to the Board of Selectmen to oversee REC, Old Home Week, all of that encompasses.
Just to let them know.
Because the last project we had, you know, was, you, you, you're not letting Old Home Week, we want everybody to be able to use the building. If they can stick within the six-week, we get, and even the eight-week is just prior to.
No, the eighth week is the week of Old Home Week.
The eighth week is the Old Home Week. So, but I wanted to now let everybody know. I wanted this board to support. You've already reached out to any other organization that had previously asked for permission.
Right, we, we have had some organizations already scheduled, so we've reached out. One was SLAM, and we just, we can't accommodate a space for the size that they need, so we've let them know. And, I mean, we're trying to work with, like, you know, with REC that typically uses the gym, we're working to identify, you know, a couple of spaces here that we can use.
That's really nice.
So, trying to work with all the other organizations, but it's just this very fluid process. And the other...
And it needs to be done.
Thing that I would mention about the six to eight weeks is, that's just for that crew. There still needs to be time for my staff to go back in afterwards and, you know, make sure things are clean, set up, organized, and that whole thing, because they are gutting everything out of there. So, there will be a little bit of time to make sure that things are kind of put back to being usable, and we'll do it as quickly as we can. But just, I, I think there needs to be at least that buffer for a little bit of time, because we don't know really what it's going to look like when we're done, and, you know, like, what is that? You know?
So, Sherry, to give you an update, the, the big air handler that's in the back room of the gym, that's coming out where the four skylights were before in the gym, those are going to be air, rooftop heat and AC units. So, it's, it's a major overtaking of that, but the...
And they're taking all the sheet metal down?
Right.
For the air on that whole side wall, too. This is good, just for transparency.
Yeah.
Yes, well, and it, it gets it out there that everybody knows, and, and we should also...
I mean, everything has to come out of there.
Post a letter, so that everybody knows and sees it's on our website, it's everywhere. But, questions for Heather?
No, I'm glad it's getting done.
It's been a long while.
Yes.
I think we started this, like, three or more years ago.
And then Esther, then Esther kicked in and was, made it more worth, better worth our money. So, worked out well. So, letter, everybody okay?
Yes, good.
So, I'll take a motion to approve sending the letter. Motion by Sarah, second by Ed. Any other discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, carries. Okay.
Opening day procedures, it was asked last year to have it on at this time. So, here's the current plan, I think this mostly refers to kindergarten. What we did this past year is actually what we plan to do for this coming year. We, this will be our third year in a row doing kindergarten practice days. So, we invite the new incoming kindergartners in for three mornings in August. They come in, they meet with their, all, they'll be in each of those three rooms, one day each, so they'll get to see each classroom, they'll get to see the teachers. So, that will be that practice, we'll practice some routines, and parents will come in, drop off kids, pick up kids, see the room, do all of that. And then, we also have our Welcome Back to School night, where everybody walks the building with their families, goes, meets teachers, walks in classrooms, checks that out, and then, we'll start school, just like any other school day, and welcome people in through the drop-off and bus, and so.
So, for the first day, parents can't bring the kids in?
So, we haven't had parents bring the kids in for years. And when we did have parents bring them in, they only went as far as the lobby. No one really walked down to the classroom. We always had kindergarten teachers would meet right in the lobby and take them down, or Perez, or whoever. So, we're just, because we're investing so much time in the practice, in, in those routines, and we give them that very personal attention there, it makes it easier for everyone to just start the whole routine altogether. And it's what we do, day one, day two, day hundred, so.
And the preschool could be different.
Preschool's different.
It has nothing to do with us, right.
Whole different thing.
Has nothing to do with us.
Yep.
Well, that was going to be my question. Does the preschool come in on that end, or the same?
The preschool will be all entry and exit through that door down there. Yep.
Would that change the elementaries? Just carries.
Nope. We're making arrangements to work with all that.
Just carries.
Yep, nope. Good questions. So, everybody good, their questions, thoughts, concerns? I think, I think the addition of the three days for those transitioning kindergartners is a, is a big push where the parents can come in, right in through the school, right down to the classroom.
Right, and the parents come in all those three days, is that correct?
Yep.
And walk them to their classrooms all those three days?
Yep.
I'm just remembering, you know, just thinking.
Walk them, put them in a carriage, wheel them, however you like it, backpack them.
I'm going to wheel you.
And some didn't, because they were in REC, so, you know, someone, you know...
Right, some came right from REC.
Walk them down, or right, whatever, okay.
It's, it's all different.
Right.
But, yes, that opportunity is there for...
Those days, right.
But we also want to practice those routines, too.
Makes sense.
You know, of drop-off and pick-up and those kinds of things, so we work with parents for that.
Yep.
Good. Okay.
Sounds good to me.
SAS schedule on a page.
Oh, yeah, I have still, two more things. So, we are on this part two and three of New Hampshire SAS testing, the state mandated testing. We had to do the writing earlier this year in March, because they changed it and decided that everyone should do writing, grades three through six, and that had to be done in March, because they're hand-scoring it, which then, later this fall, they will then train AI to score it. So, now, we're on the parts two and three, or four, so we have reading that will start tomorrow. Next week, we'll do some math. In the following week, fifth grade does the science test. So, that is happening.
Do we know a percentage of opt-outs?
Currently, I only have one exemption.
Good. So, we've done a lot of work trying to work with that.
And last, any questions about state testing?
The writing one's going to be a mess, that's all I can see is hands.
The writing one is a hard one to score. It all, I mean, I've taught five, six for years, and fifth grade was always the writing test, and it really, the only algorithm was, if it filled the whole page, then they could get really great scores. So, it'll be curious how technology will change that, so. But it's new for everybody, so it's that weird disadvantage for everybody, and so, we'll work through it. And last but not least, is staff appreciation, so it's Staff Appreciation Week. So, we have partnered with the PTO and are doing several different things to show our staff appreciation, whether they are getting some notes written by parents. We have some volunteers coming to cover lunch and recess duty, thank you.
I saw you two on the list.
We have some others that'll be doing lunch and...
See you tomorrow.
Recession duty to free up, just to give them a bonus. It was pretty exciting, to like, oh, I got a free duty, you know, so they were excited. We have a raffle going on, and we have some treats, just small things. We have a fridge that the PTO's been sponsoring all year, so to this week, we're filling the fridge every day, instead of just the first week of the month, we're filling it every day. So, just trying to shower them in a lot of different ways to show them that we appreciate them.
It's a lot of great...
There might be some retraining after I do recess duty, back to rules, but...
I'll be there to keep my eye on you.
And that's this whole week.
It is the whole week. Yep.
Yes, you're appreciated, please.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls.
I will say that we have two staff members that, this is their thirty-first year.
Wow.
So, yeah, we, we do have a nice spread of, like, first-year teachers, you know, in the middle, and, you know, more veterans. So, it's, yeah, it's pretty great to have that nice, I think it's a good balance for our students and for our staff, just collaborating with each other to bring that experience, but then bringing that new idea kind of thing together. It's been great, so.
Questions for Heather?
Thank you for all you've done for them, for the staff appreciation, too, and you worked really hard on all that stuff, and it's, I was in there today.
I think that's my job, is to be their cheerleader.
Well, it's really great, I mean, I was in there and I saw, I was, like, want to work here, I want to get one of those prizes now. And the bingo, that was really cool, too.
We are doing a bingo game for fun, too.
So, that, I just, you know, it's the things that you don't see when you come in here, and that was, that's really cool.
All right, Heather Sherwood, you are up.
Mine's nowhere near as exciting as Cliff's, at all.
You got twenty-five thousand extra?
I do not, so speaking of revenues. Revenues are, are pretty stable, they're coming in. April, we did finally see a check from Medicaid services.
Oh.
Like, four hundred dollars, which I think...
Four hundred?
Four hundred.
Oh, okay.
But, I mean, we only, it's not, it's by, certainly not at all a driver of the revenue budget. We only estimate, estimated two thousand for the year. But it, it is finally coming in, like, that's the first one, really, that I've seen all year. Yeah, so that was kind of exciting, but the town has been sticking to the schedule really well, and they were helpful and adjusted it when I needed it, and it comes every two weeks, I never have to reach out or anything, so it's been really good.
Next.
And then, on expenditures, yeah, there's no extra money in the budget. And the two biggest drivers there, really, are out-of-district costs. There were some unanticipated extra expenses for this year, and some expenses that we And some expenses that we knew about last year about this time, but it was well after budgeting. So that was kind of driving us towards over budget anyway. And some of that is, there was not an expectation of out of district transportation, at least not much. So that is over budget as well. And then, I think we talked about this last meeting, but the building repairs have also kind of given us some money. So I know moving on to the fund balance, I have kind of a negative balance projected, which is kind of pretty close to what is showing as the bottom line on the expenditure is over budget.
And then it's page twenty-eight.
Encumbered for special ed that may or may not come to fruition. Conway does not bill to the end of the year. And then there's some assumptions that, you know, we'll still have some purchases through the end of the year. I did share out with all the districts, um, a copy of the open purchase orders and then requests to have all new requisitions in by the fifteenth of May. And then we'll kind of shut things down and clean up and, um, nothing to be totally alarmed about. We may need to tap the special ed capital reserve, but it really kind of hinges on those last bills to come in.
Okay.
But. From a personal standpoint, I'd rather tap the special ed to offset that, to allow for the building maintenance.
Correct.
It's just shuffling chairs on the deck, but.
Yep, to be funded. Absolutely.
And then some good news is we finally have the IDA grant for this year approved and so we'll be running some things through there that we've, they're not showing in these expenditures, but we were, it's been a lot of back and forth and we're finally moving in the right direction. So I don't expect any of those to get moved to the term of fund.
Okay.
Which was a concern for me for a little bit.
Questions for Heather? All right.
I have one more thing that's not on the agenda.
That's okay.
But over vacation week, I had reached out to Department of Labor, basically because in a meeting I was in in December, January, they were a presenter and they said, you know, it's not a question if, if we visit your school, it's when. So if you have any questions about what you're doing or you're not sure or you're new, she says it'd be really good idea to reach out, to do an amnesty audit. He says, you know, they'll go through everything, they'll write up a report if they have any findings, but the big difference is there's no fines or no penalties. So I thought, you know, it'd be really good idea to do that. I didn't announce it to anybody, didn't say it was coming out. But I walked around with the inspector during vacation week and it was a really good visit. With a couple of small things at Madison, easy to address, to like, you know, put a strap on a ladder to secure it instead of having it just lean against the wall. But overall, it was good. I don't expect it to be a whole lot, a few updates to the employee safety plan. Um, I do not have the reports yet, I'll share those out when I get them, but it was a good experience.
Nice.
I like proactive.
Be cool.
Cause then we know what we can fix before they actually do walk in for real.
And they will come back, I mean, without a doubt.
Right.
It may not, it will probably not this year, it may not be next year, but they will be back.
No, I like, thank you. Any questions?
Mike, you're up.
All right. Um, most of my, this evening is informational. The consolidated application that really goes hand in glove with what Heather shared earlier with the Title I update. So this is a new process the DOE is going through regarding just making sure that the application is being filed by more at the, at the central office level, at the SE level rather than the district level. So that's due June first. Heather and I will be looking at that.
It's started.
Look at that, unbelievable. Well, hey, I should've known better. So Heather's already started that. And we're apparently off to a great start. So we will have that done before it needs to be in. And if we, if anything, we'll keep you apprised of the situation.
Perfect.
So that basically by filling out that application that a lot of people, we've already signed our insurances this year, the board has already authorized that. So that will give us access to all our federal grants, our title grants.
Okay.
We use for professional development, Title I for our students and Title IV for well-rounded school. ESY update, ESY will be, I think we've talked about this a few times, but it couldn't hurt to talk about it one more time. So it'll be July eighth through August first. We'll run nine to twelve, it'll be four weeks. It'll be here at Madison Elementary. Thursday will be our Laura Foundation Day. And I believe Tim is going to be, Tim Elder is just gonna be providing our transportation for us. And Lisa is in the midst of hiring for that. I believe she has four, two, two paras and two teachers lined up. So she's, I think, either finalizing that or it's been finalized.
Good.
That's all good stuff. Preschool update, preschool registration went live on the first. So we're, I'm very happy with the numbers that have been coming in. So Madison has six tuition students. Getting close, not quite yet, but I mean, we, there's a little wiggle room depending on how many identified students are in the program. And how many days of the week students wanna go. But right now, just looking at Mile High, yeah, Madison, there are six students that have, are looking to tuition in as regular ed, six Tamworth and three Freedom.
That's great.
Yeah, so we're, we're off to the races there.
How many will we fill out?
I believe it was five, five and two. But there's some wiggle, there's.
Okay.
Three, five, five.
Yeah, there's some wiggle room there depending on how many special ed, Lisa's going through that process right now.
Right, exactly.
Got it.
Talking with families about, that are already in programs, about what their plans are for next year.
Great.
So it's, we're really in good shape there. On the sixteenth, we will be meeting with, hopefully with Kim, who is our new, our new early childhood teacher and myself. Heather will be involved in that and Lisa to hire paraprofessionals. So we'll have a nomination prior to the joint board meeting.
Any applications for the?
Uh, we do. We have two external applications and then there's some also, some people at Madison Elementary that are interested.
Cool. Didn't mean to jump the gun on you there, sorry.
The best, the best candidate will get the position. So we're, we're feeling good about that.
Okay, that's great.
Uh, end of year school calendar up, and there are just a few more things on preschool before I go ahead. We've been looking at some facilities upgrades, you know, there's some issues where we wanna put the, uh, the playground just drainage wise, so we're working through all the nuts and bolts there.
Is it gonna be in the back or no?
Uh, we're gonna do some site work. So there's already been some site work that has, uh, where the garden area is. So the, it's, it's a little wet there, so we're gonna be looking at some ways to keep that.
I know, I don't know if, do we, I don't like it out there.
Keep it dry. So there will be some fencing and making sure we set privacy fencing as well. So.
I just don't like it near the road.
It's not near the road though.
They're gonna be fine, it's gonna be fenced.
I just don't like that.
It's, well, it's, it's definitely, I had, Sarah, I'll be honest, I had the same reservation as you did at first. And I got out there and actually looked, okay, this is a lot further back than.
Yeah.
Playing in traffic builds character. We all played Frogger growing up.
I don't know if I go that far.
Well, look at the schools in the cities, they all cross the road to get to the playground, so it should be fine. But out, out back here, I feel like, uh, the water pools a lot, so.
Yes.
It might be better to go over to the garden.
Not like over here.
Talking rule.
So we're, we're gonna do some, we're gonna do some, some site work there, so have some bushes, some privacy fencing, all that, all that stuff.
You also have to remember that kids aren't out there all day. They're out there for like fifteen, twenty minute blocks a couple of times a day. So it's not like it's all day outdoor.
They will be safe.
I know.
I had the same reservation, Sarah, I'll be very honest, I did too. And I went out there and did a site walk with Heather and Lisa and.
They all feel good about it.
We could get the things like in nursing homes when they get out of the chairs, the alarms go off. We could put one on each kid when they go outside, time together.
Okay.
All right, moving on.
So, yeah, so that's, so preschool is shaping up to be in a good spot. Very, very happy with the way that's looking and we're going through the facility items. Freedom has sent over all the materials from the old Freedom program.
Nice.
So Heather is ecstatic with me that I brought those over to her school.
Great.
We have those here and Kim will be going through those items, what we're gonna keep, what may need to be kept. So, yeah, so that's what's, that's what's happening in the world of preschool.
Cool, thank you so much.
Moving forward, yes, go ahead.
What do we, as a Madison board, wanna do about before and after school for the preschool?
Good question, what's the?
So we, we need to do a little more on our end, but it would be higher. A recommendation that I would have is that we hire someone separate for that, for that position.
Through the SAU?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And unless there's someone, unless there's someone at the Madison, here in the Madison school that's interested in taking that on. Or my thought is the paraprofessionals that may be in the program or interested in the program, we offer, you know.
Would wanna work a few extra hours.
Either way, the money and all the funding, everything is going through the SAU. It's not a Madison position, so it's not a Madison program.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that it, because it's at our facility, it didn't conflict with whatever we did.
Whatever we have going on.
Right, resources, whatever.
It came up at the joint meeting, so.
Yep, right, no, and I think that's, and I think that was kind of the consensus is whatever they deal, do, let's, and keeps all the money at the SAU level.
Yep.
And as far as like our art teachers and our music and things like that, they're gonna get like a stipend for doing, what's the?
So it's, they're gonna purchase services from us, which allows us, because of the potential of, well, not even the potential, we're gonna be downsizing the classroom.
We've dropped a classroom for next year, so this is kind of picking up a classroom.
It's helping us retain our staff to the percentage of the right now.
I mean, I like, I, I, I'm all for it, but I just, you know, some, you know, just put it up there.
Absolutely, yes.
Just trying to be transparent.
Yeah. So, yeah, so that's what's happening. Lots of work going on, we're going a million miles an hour here with preschool and I have some great staff here working on that. So very, very happy with the way that's progressing.
This is really exciting stuff, thank you.
It is. Just keep moving forward.
Absolutely. End of the year, um, school calendar, so just a quick update because of all the snowstorms and everything that we've had. I just wanna make sure everyone's on the same page when we're getting out of school. So our students will be getting out of school on the fourteenth, that's a Friday, that'll be early release. And staff will be getting out the following, uh, the eighteenth, which I assume is Tuesday.
For salary stuff.
So we're letting Janet out earlier because her side of the building.
Pretty much, she is wrapped up and out of the kitchen by then.
Worried about the construction?
By the last day of school?
By the fourteenth, yes.
The gym and.
Yeah.
It starts Monday.
If you have everybody here, the seventeenth and eighteenth.
Nobody eats the last week.
They won't be.
That, I think they're gonna have to figure out parking for those couple of days.
We're not worried.
Okay.
Something to consider. And the last item I have is late bus, how that's been working out. So I reached out to Tim. Tim said that that, they're off to the races, it's been going well. He said there was a couple minor bumps in the road, pardon the pun, um, during the.
Did you just raise your hand as a knee?
During the start of the.
My kid was at school for a long while because he didn't get picked up.
Yes, during the start of this, when this first started, yes, that, there was a few, a couple, um, late bus pickups that didn't happen. But now that we've been instituting this, it's been much smoother. Unless, unless I'm missing anything, Sherri, feel free to let me know.
No, I just didn't fill out the form, so they didn't go there.
That's right. I mean, that's what, what happened. But now that I think our parents are aware of what's going on, it's had a chance to roll out. Tim said it's been going very smoothly.
Does it seem to save us on certain days?
Yeah, it saves a, a trip going out there. Um, he said it's, it really depend, what really helps us is those periods of athletic, you know, the breaks in the season.
The breaks in between seasons.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
And will Butler do that same thing for next year or?
We have, we will need to talk about that, right, because Tim is in the process of, of that transition about, there's a couple of things that need to be clarified. One is the late bus, one is special education transportation. So we are, did we, did we do that in public? Did we have that discussion or did you bring that up in public? We talked about some of the contractual things in, in public.
So, so one of the things I guess then to say is, so Eldridge Transportation is selling our contract to Butler Services effective the end of the school year, which has been discussed prior with the board. Tim from Eldridge Transportation came out and met with us and we were okay with that because it's his contract to do with what he needs, the provided. Services are still gonna be provided at the same cost in which we are contracted with Eldridge, but it will be under Butler next year. Just figured I'd get that out there. Everybody else, when they hear a new name come up in, in the, in the game. Questions for, other questions for Mike? Yes?
Being brand new here, I had no idea there was a preschool in this building.
It hasn't begun yet.
Aha.
It was just, it was just voted and approved by the SAU, um, by all three towns of the SAU, so it'll be an SAU preschool.
The late buses, I don't know if we can communicate this, especially with the sixth graders moving up to the middle school, but, I actually go to Madison, our elementary school's website to fill out the form for the late bus, cause I cannot find it on the middle schools, so I don't know if that's something, I don't know if we can communicate with them as a board.
Yeah, Conway, you can.
That is Gretel, right?
Gretel would, yeah, Gretel would be the transportation director for nine.
Can we maybe send the link up to Gretel?
We can. Ultimately, it's gotta get to Tim.
Well, but if it's linked to.
Just to have it on their website. She's asking, can I have the link on the website?
On the SAU, not on the website.
To come to, that'll go to Tim's, it's filled out online, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I haven't done it, I don't have it.
Yeah, I can reach out, I'll, I'll check a couple, see if they're, they would be willing to do that. And if Tim, I just wanna make sure that's something Tim's gonna be, that link goes to the same place.
Got it. Right. Cause it should, thinking it should be wherever they click on, wherever they, like, here, RSAU or, or go to Eldridge Transportation's website directly and click on it, but yeah, no.
Is there a sec, I have to, I wanna make sure that it's clarified that that's for Madison students.
Well, it, it would be nice, like, just going to the middle school's website as a parent, you know, with, of a.
Cause that's where you should.
Right.
To be able to just click on that link that is provide, that I can get through the elementary school.
Right.
But hasn't been provided.
You know, if you moved to town and you'd never dealt with the elementary school and your kids are middle school or high school, you don't think, oh, I gotta go back to the Madison school's website? Where you've been through the system, you said, oh, if I go to Madison, I can find it.
Yeah, it would be helpful.
There's this very difficult to deal with anyways, like.
And they do the parent meeting, it'd be so helpful to be like, this is where you go to.
Right. So I think, so should be two step, make sure Butler's gonna still provide the same way.
Right.
And if they can, at that point, we can get the links to Conway to utilize for these students as well.
Right. And then it's clear that anyone logging onto the middle school know that if, for example, a Tamworth family wasn't asking for late transportation, this is Madison.
It'd be Madison's teams, like here, Tamworth or Freedom.
There's a click, there's actually a click down like box. So it's only one form and you, you just hit the dropdown and you pick where your child is from.
Oh, okay.
So whether you're from Madison or Tamworth or Freedom.
Okay, so probably any of the towns that he provides services for.
Yep.
Again, I've never been on it, so I have no clue.
Looking at.
Well, I usually search for it when I can't find it, my kids stay at school.
Jackson got left there before too.
Yes, so perfect, thank you.
Before there wasn't.
We'll leave it on our website for you.
Yep. Any other questions for Mike? School board business, twenty-four, twenty-five, school board meeting calendar review and approval.
Page twenty-nine.
Page twenty-nine.
So at the last joint board meeting, we presented the dates for all the joint boards. And as follow up, I wanted to make sure that each of the boards had the opportunity to vote and approve their meetings that were just scheduled by Carol and myself. So if some of those need to be changed or I know sometimes in the beginning of the year with holidays and, you know, Monday, first Monday of the month's pretty simple, but just to make sure that the board had a chance to review and look that over.
Like you have one scheduled on Labor Day? No? Just checking.
Yeah, exactly.
Is that, that's not Labor Day, this year's the ninth. Okay.
No, I, I just give an example.
No, I, thank you, I appreciate it.
Making sure I'm paying attention.
Thanksgiving Day, we should have one on that.
Right, Christmas, might as well.
I will take a motion to approve the calendar. Motion by Sarah, second by Jeremy. Any other discussion, any people want extra days off? Seeing none, all in favor? Carrie's. Recording secretary nomination, we're gonna table that for two months. Cause we're doing a trial on something new around here.
Check the things up in Madison.
That's how we do it, that's how we rule. HVAC construction, we've already talked about that. First reading of policy GBCD, which is the, which is, uh,
GBCD is the background check policy.
Got it.
So I can provide some additional context here. So selfishly, uh, the SAU has been moving towards trying to get all the districts on one policy. So this is, what's been changed, um, the grammar expert on our policy team, Kathy.
Kathy.
Has made a few suggestions. So, uh, this does not change any of the content, but it changes the way that it specifically calls out how we pay for background checks as, as we change this year for volunteers and substitutes in that section.
So how, can you just tell me how they are? Cause I know there's been a lot of discussion in the past, different wise for the three different districts.
Yes. So we are now, I'm happy to share, after this goes through, all the, all three districts have agreed to pay for background checks for substitutes and volunteers. Not for any third party folks coming in.
Not the bus drivers from a, like, that was the thought behind that change.
Okay, perfect. So now I think we should just go the other way, just to be like.
Not employees of contracted services.
Finally got a wall to go our way.
Not employees of contracted services.
But like employees of Madison School District?
Employees of Madison School District.
I was asking, it was a question. So you're saying you're only paying for covered, covered person? Designated volunteer? I'm just trying to. Designated volunteer, I'm just trying to clarify, sorry.
Volunteers, substitutes is where it's at right now.
Volunteers and substitutes.
Okay.
Is there any provision for them to work a number of substitute times before they get reimbursed, or?
Nope, not right now. You're really sounding like you want to join the policy committee.
What's your fight in rights?
You've been on that policy committee, the superintendent said I couldn't be.
Okay. All right, children, I will take a motion to approve as a first reading, reading, because if Kathy heard me say reading, she'd. Motion by Ed, second by Jeremy, all in favor? Carrie. We will see it come back next month for a second reading and adopt it.
Perfect.
So your homework is to make sure you've read through this, because this would be a change in policy because you have not paid for background checks before. So if you are adopting this, then you're committing to that and then need a budget line for it.
However, earlier, the board did vote on this.
We did vote to approve.
Yes, the board did vote on, it's a, nothing changed content wise, it's only changed language. Earlier this year.
Is the board aware then, because that's a change in practice that we haven't done before?
Yes, we voted on that.
But we need to make sure we have money in the budget.
Oh, absolutely, yes, yeah, we ran the, and if we don't, are you okay taking it by yourself? Sounds like a lot's coming out of there. Yes, we, we did run the numbers on that, and I believe it was like eight hundred bucks.
Okay.
And that's district wide, actually the SAU line.
Okay, so who's got the most money, Cameron?
Yeah, they definitely do.
We can stop recording now, just kidding, she's like, we're live, and we're getting comments all over the place. All right, next we have is building policy update. So this was request.
Yes.
Brought this back and forth, Mike, Jeremy, and Ed have done some background and research on this, so go for it.
Yes, so we, the Madison Policy Committee met on this to talk about what we needed for additional information. So the charge that came out of that was that I should reach out to Primex to find out some additional information. I did get ahold of Primex, I had a conversation with their rep and their attorney, and basically there were three real pillars to this decision. One was facilities usage and a formal MOU, so their, their advice was, we could do an MOU with the, with the town or rec department. But we would need to adjust that to have additional indemnification on that. Right now it's, there's nothing really there in our policy for indemnification, and that's what the MOU should state. If, if we have an MOU, it needs to indemnify both parties. And the reason for that is, we have uniform standards for reopening. So when school is closed, we have to meet a certain criteria for making sure that the building is safe to reopen. And the people that do that are the grounds facilities, the maintenance facilities that go out and salt and shovel, and the town that comes through and plows and salts and sands. And really where our liability is, is with our slips and falls policy. So if we have someone else or another institution reopening that school and holding to that standard, that reopening standard, that's a change in our practice. So it was not advised that we give authority to another institution. If that were to be done through an MOU, which we've gone down that road before, and there was no real interest in an MOU, would need to indemnify. However, there's no, if there was, it was an incident, we would, there would be liability, on our part, there'd be liability on the parties, part who was using the building because that reopening standard was essentially put in jeopardy because I, I couldn't say that. Or if we're reopening a building at 10 o'clock, excuse me, if we're reopening, if we closed school at 10 o'clock, decided to delay and wanted to reopen the building at, you know, for an after school event, I can't guarantee that the building's safe to reopen. When we do that, I have conversations with building administration, facilities that, hey, we're good to go, town and roads crews that we're, we're set to reopen. So at this point, I would not advise changing this policy. I, I understand the, the thought, and I think it's great, I think this was a good exercise to, to look at. But at this point in time, I think for liability reasons and insurance reasons that we keep the standard of practice.
It is what it is.
What is involved in the MOU?
So we, we don't have an MOU, so we've reached out about possibly having an MOU. And if we did have an MOU, we, we would need to indemn, both parties would need to owe liability. Except, thank you, Jim, yeah, both parties would need to mutually agree on that. And I believe we did have some conversation about wanting to put an MOU in place and it didn't go anywhere, it was not, right.
They didn't, the selectmen didn't want us to have one.
That's correct.
So.
So that's who it goes to, would be the selectmen.
So would be the, the board of selectmen would be.
They just sort of laughed at it, to be honest.
They said, we all have our policies, we all have our policies and procedures in place, and therefore that acts.
And it would also cost us more insurance because it would be a change in practice.
That's right, that, Primex, thank you, Ed, that Primex did mention that, that under slip and fall policy, that yeah, you'd need to report that you're changing your practice. Or we would be not, not sharing that we're changing things, because Primex is under the understanding that you're meeting this criteria. And then if we change that, that's gonna alter the rate we pay, or be at risk for not being covered.
Right.
And it's not cheap.
Right.
And so I guess my only other question, because obviously you guys know I'm gonna.
Yeah, no.
Report back to.
Multiple role here, yeah, exactly.
Is, so if the school is closed because it's canceled, that would stand true to anybody entering this building?
Any organization?
Any organization entering the building.
Or staff?
If school is, no one should be, no one should be entering the building, unless it's custodial, thank you.
Right.
Right, so yes, so, right, if, if school's canceled, it's not just for a reason of, it's, it's for everybody.
Cause it's not safe to be on the road.
Other than non-essential staff, I guess would be probably the correct term to use, non-essential staff.
Because in truth, you're gonna have some people, aside from custodians here, because there are some functions of the building that need to be taken care of. Whether that's food related or other administrative things, there are stuff that happens, but.
Yeah, I, I'm just asking because, you know, we had the days where school was canceled, 10 o'clock, it suns out, there's no snow on the ground. And I assume the liability is the same for staff entering, or anybody entering the school, as it would be to have the kids here playing basketball, so.
I think one difference I might think is that when you have an organization, it makes it more like sanctioned. Whereas if I come in, it's on my own decision to come to work to assess things or work, you know, like that kind of, makes it a little bit different.
Well, it's the administrator, right, that's different than a.
Right, you're an employee of the building.
Or I may have a teacher that's here, because if we, back when we were doing remote, if they lost internet, but we're right around the corner, could come here and access it to do that, so.
And they're employed by.
Well, within your job description, there's certain things here that you may need to be in this building for to, to check. And if, it's really unnecessary, people that don't absolutely have to be in the building should not be here. Any unnecessary, that's vital, that's not vital to their job, should not be in the building.
It's not like we had a ton of snow days.
Right, right, right. No, and I mean, it came up with, I think it was back, basketball practice, or.
Right.
It was basketball related, right, yes.
I think, yeah, I think it was, I think there was a few days where your school was canceled, and it was like, for safety reasons, obviously. You know, like, you don't want to take that chance. But then by like 10 o'clock, it was like, you're low.
And it's tough, but, and I, and Mike and I have a lot of this, have had a lot of this back and forth conversation to try to figure out, you know, and it is, it would be then Mike's responsibility to say, yes, the building is now reopened, and now we're accepting all liability. Some kid goes in the gym in their gym sneakers and runs out, but it's gotten cool again, and slips and falls, it's on our policy.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Janet, did you have something?
No, I'm good.
Okay, just, just stretching?
Yeah, I was thinking of something, but then I.
Okay. You can always bring it back. Other questions, thoughts, I mean, I know.
I think that makes sense, I mean, it's.
And it doesn't happen too often.
Right, it, it doesn't, I think, you know, our boys only won one game, so we want them on the court where we can get them there.
They need to practice.
Maybe they need to practice on Silver Lake, when it's frozen, ice slips and slides, all the fun stuff, on ice skates.
No, it's good, I get it.
All right, I'm gonna keep moving, so, no need to vote? Perfect, yes?
The Little Red Schoolhouse, or Corner School House, the corner, the fence.
The Madison Corner Schoolhouse, the fence is up.
It's not in front of the school, like.
It's not?
You'll see.
Okay. It doesn't go behind the small building?
In the front, all the way.
Right, because it has to be access to get in there.
I just was envisioning something.
I, I was also envisioning something ugly, which is what I was hoping for.
Not ugly, but just all around the whole building, so.
I see what you're saying.
Thank you.
Yes, so we're, we're working, we've, we've started meeting again since the vote.
I mean, the fence is beautiful, don't get me wrong.
I know it is.
It's beautiful, don't get me wrong.
So we are gonna move forward and start, we're gonna do a walk through the building to see what is needed and have, start putting a plan in place for what the first steps will be, lead, lead remediation wise, and then we're gonna go from there. But I will continue to report out once we get that rock and rolling again.
Thank you.
And yes, I want an ugly fence.
I just.
Because I just wanted to call it out and say something's wrong here.
I just want, yeah, well, well, you'll see.
Do I have anything else, first reading, adjourn?
Adjournment.
Isn't there another policy?
I see one there, Pat, yeah.
That's KF, that's the leader.
Yes. Second?
Oh, wait a minute, what?
Ed's motion to adjourn, that was the one that we decided not to act on.
That was related to the reopening.
The reopening.
Oh, okay.
We're keeping it the same.
Yep, 7:51, I have a motion and a second, all in favor. All opposed? Have fun. Thank you very much.
Pat, thank you for this, I wrote your name in on a calendar, so hopefully you win a prize.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.